Good afternoon. We will call to order the Dickinson City Commission meeting of June 18th. The record should note that we have three commissioners present tonight. Our first agenda item will be the Order of Business. Anybody have anything that they need to add or change with our Order of Business? If not, we should have a motion to approve that Order of Business.
So moved.
We have a motion, a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the order? If not, all in favor say aye.
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 And oppose, that motion carries. And then we have a consent agenda. We have only two items on the consent agenda tonight. That is the minutes of our last meeting and our accounts payable. Anybody want to discuss either one of those?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Oatmans? Your vote?
Aye.
And Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we'll move into the non timetable agenda. The first item on the agenda is a financial report.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'd like to highlight a few items from the financial report through May. We'll begin with the general fund report. With 42 percent of the year completed, our property taxes equal $3.2 million and were 98 percent collected compared to budget. Our other taxes and fees includes financial institution tax and franchise fees and is 69 percent collected compared to budget. Our intergovernmentals include revenues we receive from the state and local governments, such as highway distribution tax and oil production tax, and is 33 percent collected compared to budget. Our licenses, fees, and services include things such as building permit revenue and oil royalties, and is 39 percent collected compared to budget. Our building permit revenue is up $198,000 over last year. This category also includes our municipal court fines, which are $98,000 more than last year, $18,000 of which is for overweight truck fines, which were started in 2012. Our sales of city lots and equipment, we have sold a million dollars worth of city lots through May, and our total general fund revenues equal $6.4 million and were 57 percent collected compared to budget. Our general fund expenses through May are broken down by groups. They include general government, which includes administration, court, finance, and buildings and grounds, and is 46 percent expended compared to budget. This overage is due mostly to timing. Our public safety is 39 percent expended compared to budget. Our engineering and streets is 37 percent expended compared to budget. And our cultural services, which includes museum and forestry, is 29 percent expended compared to budget. Our total general fund expenses equal $4.7 million through May and were 41 percent expended compared to budget. In our enterprise fund report, we show the revenues and expenses of the three funds. Our water and wastewater revenues equal $3.4 million through May and were 53 percent collected compared to budget and 51 percent more than last year. This increase in revenue is due mostly to bulk water sales. Our expenses and capital outlays total $2.3 million, which is 42 percent expended compared to budget. Our growing cash balance in this fund will help offset financing for the wastewater treatment facility, the pump house, and part of the public works building. Our solid waste fund revenues total $1.4 million through May, which is 50 percent collected compared to budget and 37 percent more than last year. The large increase is mostly attributed to added commercial accounts. Our expenses and capital outlays total $1.1 million, which is 41 percent expended compared to budget. In our sales tax reports, our 1 percent sales tax fund shows we received $614,000 of revenue in May, which is up 56 percent for the year. Our 1 percent sales tax fund is broken down into three segments, and I have added slides to show revenues and expenses in each of these. And the first is our 50 percent share, which transfers 50 percent of the total revenue received to the street projects fund. This transfer occurs at year end. The transfer in 2012 is estimated to be $2.6 million. The second is our 20 percent share, which is for job creation and senior programs. This segment funds the Stark Development, elder care, and R S B P subsidies, along with the Senior Citizen and Southwest Regional Grant Program. And the third segment is our 30 percent share, which is set aside for capital improvements. The expenses here include part of the BAC pledge payment and funding for the animal shelter. I wanted to show each of these segments separately to show that while the 50 percent share transfers all of its funds, the 20 percent and the 30 percent share have growing cash balances that can be used to fund future projects. In our half percent sales tax, we received $307,000 of revenue in May, which is also up 56 percent for the year. The expenses include payment for the West River Community Center bond. In our hospitality tax, we received $109,000 of revenue in May, which is up 47 percent over last year. Our expenses include $155,000 paid to the airport and Parks and Rec for their one-time Our occupancy tax breakdown shows revenues total $87,000 in May, which is up 76 percent over last year. Our expenses include $138,000 paid to the C V V for their subsidy and $60,000 for the special events grant. Our street projects report shows we received $65,000 in revenues, and we've expended $187,000 towards those projects through May. And our development impact fee program is broken down into residential and commercial components. The schedule you receive shows the projects that have been approved and the funds available for future projects. The program has a balance of $382,000 available for commitment at the end of May. And those are some of the highlights. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Johnson. Any questions concerning the financial report? You know, Mrs. Johnson, I have a couple of, I've had a couple people stop me on the street, so to speak, recognizing the demands that we have on our city these days and wondering how the budget's doing. It's pretty clear that overall, we're in pretty good shape. That seems to be on target. Are there any individual items that you're concerned about?
We do have some of our expense items that are over budget, but really where we're tracking behind in a lot of places is in payroll because we have positions that are unfilled. So in total, we're showing almost equal, exactly equal to budget.
So they're balancing each other?
Basically.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? We should have a motion approving the natural report. We have a second?
Second.
Okay, we will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Oatmans?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Okay, we will move to item 4B, our well spacing ordinance. We passed first reading of this ordinance at our last meeting. Mr. Coling, you going to introduce that?
Thank you, Mr. Jackson Commissioners. This proposed ordinance will provide for minimum spacing distances between a wellhead and any other occupied structure. The ordinance provides that a well could not be located within 100 feet of any building or structure that is not necessary for the operation of the well, and no less than 300 feet from any other building or structure of residential, educational, institutional use, or other place of assembly. Since first reading, we have modified this proposed ordinance to provide that the distances here would be measured from the wellhead itself rather than from the wellsite boundaries. Other than that, it is unchanged from first reading. Mr. Jackson?
Okay, and the effect of that probably means that we've moved that boundary in a variable amount, but maybe 100 to 200 feet in some cases. Okay, because it is an ordinance, we'll ask if there's anybody from the audience who wants to comment before the second reading vote is taken. Anybody want to comment on this ordinance? Any Commissioners, anything to say?
Vice President, Jackson Commissioners, Deb Barrows, Fire Prevention Specialist. I think there's been some questions asked about the saltwater disposal sites that we have currently in city limits. And currently in the fire code that the city has adopted and what the ordinance is suggesting, that's not included in the spacing. It's very defined to oil wells and natural gas wells. However, I guess our position will be if we could include the spacing for those sites, just as the ordinance is stating. Reason being is the fire department is always going to err on the site of safety, and there is a risk there because of the above-ground tank that's stored at the saltwater disposal site. There is a potential for hydrocarbons being present. You also have the potential for methane, butane, H2S gases. It's not as great a risk, I will admit that, than as an oil well. So that's something that you might want to discuss. The fire code doesn't include it in the actual reading of the code, but some of those are going to get pretty close. If you maintain what the ordinance is stating, those distance requirements, I think we'll be okay with some of the developers, except for one.
So what I'm hearing you say, if I'm hearing correctly, is that you're suggesting that this ordinance be revised to include the injection wells?
It could be, yes, because it wasn't specified in the original writing of the ordinance. It's not in the fire code, but we want to bring it to your attention because there was a question asked. And our recommendation that the saltwater disposal site distances are included in that, but that's going to be your decision in the end.
Well, tell us a little bit more characterizing the fire department's concern, the intensity of your concern.
I think it's because of, the above-ground fuel tank is the issue. Sometimes lightning strikes and it will ignite because of the hydrocarbons present at the top of that tank. Static electricity sparks. When you're coming into that distance, 100 feet away, you're still going to have radiant heat off of that tank. So if you're going to bring those properties into 100 feet, you could have some radiant heat.
Do we know how many injection wells we have within our jurisdiction?
I have, we have two that I'm aware of. We have one up there by 15th and State Street, and then the other one is down what we call the Dinsdale's Bridge, over on the south side.
Mr. Coling?
They're not as great a risk as the oil wells and the natural gas wells, but it's probably going to be a question that comes up.
Because we're at second reading, your thoughts on making this change?
Mr. Jackson, I appreciate the fire department's concern on that. I think one of the reasons that we did not include injection wells or saltwater wells in here is because they are not included in the fire code. The fire code does not impose minimum distances from an injection well or saltwater well. And also Title 40 is where we regulate oil and gas wells within city limits, and that is limited in its jurisdiction to oil wells and gas wells and does not address saltwater or injection wells. So for that reason, we have not included saltwater wells or the injection wells within the ambit of this ordinance.
So I'm hearing you say that our footing is probably not quite as firm if we were to try to address injection wells?
Correct.
So how do we address injection wells?
Well, the fire department may want to weigh in on this too, but I think you would address an injection well the same as you would any other property within the city limits. You know, there are other combustible, flammable materials around in town at gas stations and things like that, and an injection well would be regulated essentially the same as any of those wells would be, or any of those other locations in town would be.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Steiner?
Are there definitions other than what is in this ordinance, 1467? You're talking like there might be definitions elsewhere, but my concern is a well site, an injection well, oil well, fall under well site?
Mr. Steiner, there are other definitions given earlier in this Title 40 of this section where this would be incorporated into. And it's, the jurisdictional ambit of that title is for oil wells and natural gas wells. And there's a subsidiary definition for, I believe it's called a service well that pertains to injection wells or saltwater wells, but it's not directly regulated by this title.
So this ordinance will not be changed, the section 40 would have to be changed?
Correct.
Okay. I think we should table this and bring it back to the next meeting to look at section 40, the definitions. It gives the clearer language of what we're looking for. I don't see it here, so.
Well, if I'm understanding right, we'd have to make this change and then decide if we want to go back and make a separate change in 40. Is that correct?
If you would want to expand your regulation of injection wells, then we would have to make a larger change to Title 40 as a whole. This section, if you adopt this ordinance, will not change the regulation of saltwater wells from what's been existing for the prior 50 years.
And it sounds like we do have other means to regulate the flammable liquid part of this with proximity?
Right. This saltwater injection well is still going to come under the jurisdiction of the fire code for other flammable uses and combustible materials that they're able to store on the property. It just won't be regulated under the minimum distancing requirements that this ordinance puts in place.
Do you know offhand what the distancing requirements are, how they would differ between this ordinance and what we have on the books for saltwater and gas stations?
For our municipal ordinance, we don't have anything, to my knowledge, that's in place for distancing on saltwater injection wells. As to the international fire code, I'd have to depend upon the fire department for those distancing requirements that might be applicable. I don't know the answer to that.
It seems to me that we should be going ahead and approving this, and then if we need to make additional changes at a later date, we can do that.
I would be okay with that.
Yeah, I think I agree with you on that, and I agree with Carson, that we just don't want to miss the boat on a piece of this because although it's been on the regulations for the past 50 years, we're going to see more intensity of the saltwater as we move forward with oil production. So we want to definitely not miss the boat on covering our bases with that, too.
Okay, anything else before we call for a motion? If not, can we get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, multiple ordinance number 1467?
Seven.
We have a second. Any more discussion? If not, we will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Oatmans?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, motion carries. Okay, we will move to item 4C, reports. Mr. Coling?
Yes, Mr. Jackson Commissioners, just two matters to bring to your attention. Both of these have to do with the availability of commissioners for attending the meeting to establish a quorum. The reorganization meeting ordinarily is held the second Tuesday in June after the election. That would be June 26th this year. That's ordinarily the time when the board selects its vice president and accepts the canvas of the election and when new terms for commissioners would begin. Talked this over with Mr. Kessel, and we do have some flexibility in our home rule ordinance to allow for a change in that date, depending on the availability of commissioners. Also, Mr. Kessel's and my recommendation to change that meeting to July 10th, so that would be the time at which you would accept the canvas of the election and when the new commissioners would start their terms, and your terms would start as well then. The second matter has to do with the annexation protests. As you may recall, we have three annexation proceedings currently pending. You passed a resolution asking for those areas to be annexed to city limits. I believe it was the beginning of February, sorry, beginning of May. And originally, we had planned for the hearing for determining protests for those annexations to be on July 2nd. There's not a quorum of commissioners available then, so we would move that meeting as well to July 10th.
And July 10th, I think, is where we rescheduled that July 2nd meeting. Is that correct?
Correct.
It's a Tuesday?
Right.
That makes sense to me.
That's fine.
Mr. Steiner?
That's okay.
I think that works.
That's all I have for those items.
I think that works for all of us. Okay. Nothing else, Mr. Coling? Okay. We'll move to public safety, item five, fire department. Mrs. Barrows, you're giving the fire department report. Is that correct?
Yes. That is correct. Okay. Let's see if I can get this to work right. Okay, for the month of May, you will see that our calls for service were 37. Last year at the same time was 28, and the year before that was 25. So you can see the trend is increasing. And we have 48 percent more calls than 2010, and a 32 percent increase in calls from last Our fire prevention and public education report shows that we had 59 routine inspections conducted in the month, 43 follow-up inspections, six construction, nine miscellaneous, which includes our fire suppression system tests for new construction. And also complaints are in that miscellaneous category. And then we had five tours, lectures, and demos. That's a total combination of that. Usually in May, we do get some students coming to the fire hall from outside the city of And that's why you have that. Okay, and then just to recap some of our activities for the month of May, our regular training topic was grass fire tactics and relay operations. Special ops training was auto extrication. The officers were able to tour Baker Hughes facility, and that was very informative. We had a tour group come to the fire hall, which was from Richardson. There was an extinguisher demonstration conducted at two area businesses. And we also presented a community service award to Wyoming Casing for their involvement in our national fire prevention program here in the city. These are the safety manuals that students get every October, and they were very generous so that, we do try to change that up a bit and present an award every year to someone that has participated in that program. So we thank them for their participation. Okay, we'll just kind of focus on the auto extrication school that we had. This was a regional fire school. It was sponsored by the North Dakota Firefighters Association. It was a 12-hour time commitment, and the following departments participated. We had the city of Dickinson, the rural fire department, West Dunn, Billings County, and also the New England Fire Protection District. We had a total of 30 firefighters at this training. And want to thank East End Auto was very instrumental in getting us the cars that we needed to practice on at that time. And that concludes the monthly report for the fire department for the month of May.
Thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Barrows?
How are you doing with staffing, volunteers, keeping up with all the activities? I see the sirens go every other day, it seems like.
Well, as you can see by the statistics, we're increasing our calls. And volunteers, you know, that's going to be a constant recruitment, constant retention. We gain a couple and then we lose a couple due to jobs, or they're moving back to where they were from because of their jobs changing, you know? But that's a constant recruitment. I think what our volunteers are telling us, the struggle is getting to the scene in a timely manner because of the traffic. And keeping in mind, we're responding out of that one central station. So they have to come to the station and get the gear and get the trucks and then go to the scene. So that's a real concern for us now that we have, you know, that increase in traffic. And of course, we're going to have road construction, but we'll make some ulterior routes our priorities to get around that. But yes, staffing is an issue. With all the new construction, we're trying to get through all those new buildings and keep up with our routine inspections. So you're going to see, if we get to that year-end report one of these days, that we're falling behind on those routine inspections because of the new construction taking us away from those. And we just have more buildings to go through.
Sure.
So we're doing the best we can with what we have.
Mrs. Barrows, a couple of months ago, we had some evidence and quite a bit of conversation about hazardous spills. There were some diesel spills, as I recall, and there was some concern that we were going to be seeing more of that possibly. Has that been the case? Have you had more of that in the last couple, three months? Any of those incidents?
We are. We just responded to a tanker that had driven into a driveway and punctured a tank, you know? So we're having, there's more truck activity, where you have the risk of those kinds of things happening. We did have an incident at one of our wells, too, that there was some vandalism done to a valve and some crude was spilled, about, I think they estimated around 400 gallons. But that was cleaned up promptly, and the company is thinking, I think there's bids going out, if I understand, to fence it in a little, broaden the fence, the perimeter of that wellsite and secure it a little bit better than it has been.
Okay.
But I think, you know, with more traffic and more tankers, the increase, the risk increases with more traffic. Okay?
Anything else for the fire department?
Just a quick question. You said vandalism to the?
That's what they're speculating when the pump operator gone on seeing that for this to leak like it was, that somebody had to have messed with the valve. That it was caught.
Not the idea to be tampering with well sites.
I know, I know it. That's what was speculated from him, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we have time for the police department here before our first timetable item.
Commissioners, Captain Joe Siani standing in for Chief Dazinger, who is out of town. May accident report. We had 97 total accidents reported in May. Of those 97 accidents, there were nine injuries, and out of the 97, there were 17 hit and runs. The guys were busy with traffic stops due to the increase in traffic. They actually made 493 traffic stops. Of those 493 traffic stops in May, 147 written warnings were issued and 388 citations. The warnings are, don't include some of the verbal warnings that the officers will provide. That's written warnings. May comparisons to calls for service. As you can see, as of May 2012, we've had 10,886 calls for service. As compared to 2011 at this time, there were 8,538 calls. That's an increase of 2,348 calls for service, keeping in mind that our calls for service are inclusive of our traffic stops and things like that, so that's included in those numbers. Our truck regulatory position has been a success up to date. As to date, our truck regulatory officer has made 129 stops on trucks. He's weighed, out of those 129 stops, he's weighed 77 semis or other vehicles. Of those 77 weighed, 34 were overweight, and to date, 237,699 pounds worth of overweight was taken off the street of Dickinson. So I would consider that a successful program to date. Our officer assigned to that, Officer Gross, did have some time off in this timeframe as well, so he had a birth of a child, so that took him off of his regular duties. So I would see, I would estimate there'd be a surgery number had he have been working full-time this whole time.
Mr. Sianic, if we can go back to that, the Wayne's trucks and so on, those wouldn't be the tankers, the saltwater or the production water tankers or the oil tankers, because they would have a capacity as far as their gallonage and the size of, it must be the flatbeds or any type of other trailer that?
It can be a variety. Some of these could be front-end loaders who are operating in town on the streets without proper permits. We do recognize state permits, so if you have a state permit, you're coming through, it would more than likely be overweight on our city streets, but we are honoring the state permits. The most recent was a, I think, I don't remember the weight overage, but it was- The most recent was a, I think, I don't remember the weight overage, but it was a front-end loader that was being run on out in the east business loop industrial area that was being operated without a permit. And that was a rather sizable violation of overweight and significant fine associated with that. But no, the water trucks for the oil fields aren't really the problem here.
And it's not limited, like you said, it can be the equipment on the road and not the equipment being trucked?
Correct. It is not just the semis or the trailers, it's actual construction equipment where deemed to be overweight and operating within the city on the city streets without a proper permit.
When they're overweight, and you might not know this here, when they're overweight and they file a permit from the state, does the city retain any of that fee that they pay?
From the state permit? No, I don't believe they do. We do.
Because I see they get a pretty good amount of income from their weight restriction fees and so on. Thank you.
Lastly, is the training report. We sent Sergeant Dan Brown, Sergeant Pete Sully to Glock Armor School in Bismarck. That's a three-day armor school, which enables them to be able to work on our Glock firearms, duty weapons. Sergeant Mike Hannel, Detective Sergeant Kylan Clauser, and Senior Officer Corey Lee attended ICS, which is Incident Command System here in Dickinson. That was a two-day course. Officer Detective Travis Lyons went to a five-day basic criminal investigation course in which to better prepare him to utilize the skills in investigations. He's newer to the investigative unit. And then we sent four officers, Officer Peters, Officer Wyler, Officer Gross, and Officer Frederick, to SWAT Basic in Fargo as part of their members of our regional tactical response team. And they spent five days, close to forty-eight to fifty hours of intensive tactical training. And that's pretty much concludes my report.
Captain Siani, the calls for service numbers. Do you guys get to see what's happening in Williston Mineout in Bismarck for calls to service, the increase that they're seeing?
We haven't compared notes as of recent. We do send a detective up, it's like every three months or so where we actually have a roundtable with law enforcement staff, and that hasn't, that's coming up here, it hasn't occurred. I think this week, he may be going on Thursday.
That's a number, I suppose, that is commonly tracked, though, by any police department?
It's depending on the record management system. If they have a, I don't believe Williston has a record management system with the capabilities of our system, so I don't believe they were able to keep accurate numbers in computer form. So they may be more difficult for them to track their numbers.
Okay.
To give a comparison, I can't say what numbers, like Bismarck Police Department, we compared to last year towards the end of the year. We have, they assign numbers to different calls, like they may or may not assign a number to a traffic stop. I know they assign a number if a citation is written in the traffic stop, but they may not assign a number for just a traffic stop. But in comparison, we were above, ahead of them in calls for service from Bismarck Police Department as of November of last year. I can't speak for that this year.
Okay. But we may not be comparing apples to apples, is what you're saying.
Exactly. That's why it's difficult. Everyone records things differently and assigns numbers to them differently.
Okay, thank you. Anything else for...
I guess, Austin, question, how's the Police Department doing as far as staffing? Are you fully staffed, still short a few positions? Where are you at?
We're struggling a little bit, needless to say, just for allocation of thirty-six sworn by September. We are still down four officers right now. We have a number of officers in training. Our average years on the street is declining, there's no doubt about that. We're doing the best with what we have. Our recruiting efforts have increased. We've went to, as far as to send, we sent an officer last week that actually traveled to Alexandria, Minnesota, to their law enforcement training academy. And on the route, he stopped in Fargo to our, one of our academies, and he tested a number of interested officers that, so they, we decided it was best to try to bring the test to them. Sometimes the test, our testing requirements are difficult for people to come, drive this distance, take the test, go back, wait for the results of the test, see if they're in the interview. We sent Officer Lee out to actually do the recruiting and offer that test. So we tested actually thirteen potential candidates, which is way above our normal numbers. And these potential officers are actually paid to take that test, thirty-five dollar fee. So we're hoping we're reaching into a different pool now to hopefully get more people to apply for us. Once again, the issue is still finding, I can get the officer, but I've been lucky, the realtors have been working well with the Police Department, have a good relationship with them. They let me know when they have a place available, and I try to get one of our new recruits into that place as soon as I can, but the housing is definitely an issue.
Thank you much, Captain. We'll move to our timetable agenda. Five o'clock item is a public hearing for utility easement vacation in the Fisher Eastside Second Subdivision. Mr. Soren, Mr. Cortan, Mr. Soren?
Thank you, Commissioner Jackson. We did receive a utility easement vacation request for Block Five of Fisher's Eastside Second. They are, there are four separate easements between lots two and three, between lots four and five, between lot six and seven, and between lots eight and nine, all of Block Five of Fisher's Eastside Second subdivision. The utility companies have all signed off on the vacation request, and therefore we have no concerns with the vacation either and would recommend approval.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Do we have anybody in the audience who would like to comment one way or the other on this proposed utility easement vacation? Anybody want to comment on that? Okay, Commissioners, any comments?
Ordinance number...
Resolution.
Mr. President, this would be resolution thirty-one dash two thousand and twelve.
Okay, if there are no additional comments, we'll look for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve resolution thirty-one dash two thousand and twelve.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any more discussion? If not, we will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Oatmans?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. That takes us to our five oh five item, which is also a public hearing for rezoning the Lyons addition to a planned unit development. Mr. Cortan, I expect that's you.
Yes, Mr. President, Commissioners, this is a rezon petition from medium-density residential to planned unit development. Within the planned unit development, there'd be three zoning destinations that would correspond to our current zoning codes. A single-family destination, a medium-density destination, and also a high-density, which is reflective of our R1, R2, and R3 zoning districts. This is all contained within the existing Lyons subdivision that's located easterly of Fourth Avenue East and to the south of Fortieth Street East. The property contains roughly twenty-two acres, and it consists of twenty-five single-family dwellings, sixty townhouses, and one hundred and forty-four multifamily dwellings. The Planning and Zoning Commission and city staff recommend approval contingent upon four attached conditions to be inserted in the adopting ordinance. If you would like, I could read those in for the record, or they'll just be noted and inserted within the adopting ordinance. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Cortan. I think that we're seeing the written version. I don't think we need to read them in unless somebody would like that. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience tonight who would like to comment one way or the other on the action to rezon to PUD at the Lyons addition? Anybody from the public like to comment? Any Commissioners have anything to comment on with this action? Ordinance number...
This would be ordinance one four seven one, fourteen seventy-one.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Steiner?
Move to approve ordinance one four seven one.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the first reading of fourteen seventy-one. Any more discussion? If not, we will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Oatmans?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Okay, we will move to item six, which is Public Works and Planning. Looks to me like this is Mr. Cortan.
Yes, Mr. President, this is a zoning text amendment for second reading of Planning at Development Amendment. Under the first reading, the idea behind this was to increase the range of applicable uses. Instead of just allowing a, the underlying zoning district for planning development, staff had felt that allowing greater flexibility for innovative design made sense, and to that degree, we felt that revising the ordinance to include residential, commercial, or industrial land uses, all contingent upon the approval of the commission, made sense to, in order to provide some more flexibility for some projects. At the last meeting, I mentioned that staff was going to propose a condition or additional language to be inserted in the adopting ordinance that would, that would either, that would allow a property owner either to follow along with the established entitlement or the vesting of the PUD if it was prior to the adoption of the chapter, or fall under the underlying zoning district, to give them the option. And with that, I have included language for, it was not attached with the adopting ordinance that you have in front of you, so I will specifically read that, so it's in the record. I didn't forward that on, and it didn't get attached to the, to the second reading of the ordinance. The additional language would be section thirty-nine oh five oh eight, essentially stating existing, existing prior PUD approvals. And it states, "Property owners shall have the option of choosing to conform with the underlying zoning district regulations or to the established PUD approval if the PUD was adopted by the commission prior to the adoption of this chapter." And in essence, that would allow flexibility from a property owner to either conform to what we have today in the zoning map or the original PUD approval. And that's the only change that I have from the first reading. And with that, I would recommend approval.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cortan. So our motion tonight, if we do it, we'd need to include the addition that Mr. Cortan has just read into the record. Let's see, anybody from the public, any comments on this ordinance to amend our zoning ordinance? Any Commissioners have any comments? If not, we need a motion for a second reading and final passage of fourteen seventy as revised tonight by Mr. Cortan.
So moved.
And a second. Any more discussion? If not, we'll vote. Mr. Oatmans?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, that motion carries. Mr. Cortan?
Mr. President, the next two items are rezon petitions. The next item is a rezon petition from Ag to Light Industrial for property situated southeasterly the city limits off of East Villard. The Planning and Zoning Commission and city staff recommend approval. There are no changes from the first reading.
Okay. Again, second reading of the ordinance, anybody from the public care to comment on the rezoning of the Gerbers subdivision? Anybody from the public? Any Commissioners, any comments? If not, we'll look for a motion for a second reading, final passage of fourteen sixty-eight. So we'll move.
Second.
Any further discussion? We'll vote, Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Oatmans?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries. And Mr. Cortan, one more.
The next rezon petition is from residential single-family to residential multifamily or medium-density for property situated easterly of Twenty-third Street West and to the south of Eighth Street West. This is located in State's Third Edition, Block Two, lots three through seven. The Planning and Zoning Commission and city staff recommend approval, and there are no changes from the first reading. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Cortan. Anybody from the public care to comment on the rezoning proposal for Schwab Messer? Any comments from the public? Any Commissioners comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Move to approve second reading and final pass ordinance fourteen sixty-nine.
Do we have a second? Any further discussion on fourteen sixty-nine? If not, Mr. Steiner, your vote?
Aye.
Mr. Oatmans?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Item C, the Roadmap to the Future, our Comprehensive Plan, is that you? Mr. Cortan?
Yes, Mr. President, I just wanted to give you an update. This is Status Report Number Seven from Catamist and Lee Jackson for our Comprehensive Plan. I'm not going to read through the items on it. Essentially, it's a summary of where we're at. We're seventy percent completed with the project. Just to let the public know, we do have some upcoming, upcoming public input meetings. They're not going to be in the very, in the very near future, but will be happening towards the fall. We will have our fourth public meeting with respect to the alternatives that were recently discussed with both the Planning Commission and City Commission on September eleventh. And then also later on throughout the year, we'll have another two meetings in the adoption, if all goes well, in January of two thousand and thirteen. And with that, I can answer any questions with respect to the Comprehensive Plan.
For anybody that has been following this, it's really been an involved process that I think is going to really, really give our city some good tools as we lead this Comprehensive Plan process. Any questions for Mr. Cortan? Okay, I asked, I asked Mr. Soren, we have a lot of construction going on in the city this summer, and none is going to be more apparent, I don't think, than the construction on Highway twenty-two. There will be disruptions to traffic flow, and there will be inconveniences to the public. And I've just asked Mr. Soren if he would comment on some of those things and maybe get some of that word out to the public tonight.
Thank you, President Jackson. Yes, you are correct. If you've been out on Highway twenty-two, they have started road construction, and we're already seeing some of the backups that are, are being caused, and we're not even really to the heart of the disruption yet. Probably the biggest area of concern for, for traffic is going to be the intersection of Highway twenty-two and Museum Drive. They are currently in the process of putting temporary signals up for that, that location because as part of the project, that intersection's going to be totally taken out, all the street, everything. It's going to be replaced with concrete, new signal, lights will be installed. But as part of that process, they've got to go through four different quadrants. Basically, they'll, they'll be replacing the concrete in, in four phases, I guess. In order to do that, we got to narrow traffic down to two lanes, basically, in, in both directions, east to west and north-south, which means there's going to be no room for left-turn phasing and things like that, which are really going to create some, some challenges through that area. You know, with it being the interstate crossing, we do expect there's going to be a lot of delays there and needs for people to go that direction. But if, if we don't eliminate left turns, you know, one left-turn person could back up people a long ways in any one of those four legs of that intersection. It's not going to be a quick process. You know, we're talking six, eight weeks probably to get that done. So we do want people to try and find alternative routes to try and get around as best they can as we get through this and realize that the end product's going to be a much better situation for us at that location. The rest of it through town, they're starting on the mill and overlay or the concrete work, starting at the Hart River and moving north on that side of it, and we'll keep moving from south to north. And then we also have the, the five landing up north that's already started as well, all the way up to Dunn County. So if at all possible, if people can avoid Highway twenty-two, we would, we would ask them to try and do that. But if you have to go that direction, expect there's going to be some, some delays in travel.
So the no-left turns at Museum Drive, Twelfth Street, that will be both for northbound and southbound, there would be no-left turns?
And east and west, I believe.
And east and west, okay. So you would, it'd probably be good advice to people, those of us who are traveling locally across the interstate, to maybe use Tenth Avenue East and State's Avenue?
That would be... That would be, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Any questions for Mr. Soren? Did you want to give me your phone number, Sean?
It is a DOT project, and they do have a website up for it. I wish I'd have brought that with me, but I don't have it in front of me. We can try and get that in the future, because they'll be having status updates, I think, on that to try and keep people informed as to how the projects are going, but...
You're saying that DOT will have a website about that project?
I believe they have one, yep. And we will try and get a link posted to our website, too, at DickinsonGov.com.
Okay. But I guess, in all seriousness, everybody needs to know that this is going to be a significant project, and there will be disruptions through most of the summer.
Yes, there will. And, you know, it will be, you know, it's been needed for a long time. Part of that's left-turn phasing for the east-west traffic that's been needed for several years. We're widening radiuses or enlarging the radiuses there. It's going to be much better travel once it's done. So we just have to get through this part of it in order to get to that, the end result.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Soren. Let's see, anything else from City Commissioners? No? Anybody from the public? Any concerns that the public wants to bring to the commission this evening? Anything at all? If there are none, we will enter to an emotion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?